Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Yes, I approve.
Jessa?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Uh, Deb?
Hi.
Thank you. Jason Terry?
Uh, I was not at the last meeting, but I approve.
Thank you. George?
As well, I wasn't at the last meeting. Abstained.
Okay. Brenda?
George was at the last meeting?
Last? Wow.
No, I followed on television. I wasn't, I wasn't actually there acting.
Okay.
Do I, do I still have you here, Brenda? Yes, I do. Brenda, if you approve the minutes, give me a thumbs up. And if you disapprove of the minutes, give me a thumbs down. Okay, I believe Brenda approves of them. It is considered acceptable if a member believes the minutes are in order, even if that member did not participate in the meeting, that they can. They believe the minutes are in order, approved. So we have approval here with George abstaining. Okay, next item is policies. Do we have any policy work, Chris?
No, we do not.
Okay. Golly, Superintendent of Schools.
Hey, thank you, everyone, and good evening. Quite a bit of information to go with everyone tonight, so just be patient. The report is much longer than usual, but I think there's a lot of important information. I think the public would like to hear as well as board members. So I'll start off first with giving you an update on our administrative team, all the principals and directors that we met today. And so classes resumed on Monday and Tuesday, 4/20 and 4/21 after the last week's break. On Monday, all devices and assignment packets have been picked up from the elementary schools. And so if you recall, we prior to this week, not all elementary school kids had devices. And so we were able to get those handed out to all the elementary schools. Middle school and high school already had all their devices out into students' hands. So a lot of the, most of the schools, if not all the schools, are still keeping in contact with all the students, especially the families who are not engaged. So they're really trying to make every effort to, because we are taking attendance for all students. If someone, if a student is not showing up for a morning meeting or a class, there are protocols in place that the school would reach out to the family to see what the situation is and how we can assist them in getting them back engaged. We're finding that there are still some spotty areas around the different towns in regards to Wi-Fi. So we're going to be working in that, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Teachers are doing a fantastic job all around, especially utilizing the Google classrooms and really providing students with that distant learning opportunities. You know, it is still a struggle, you know, some teachers, I wouldn't say they're struggling, but they're still getting used to teaching classes online, which in the past, you need to have a certification, to hold a certification or certificate to teach online classes. So considering what they're doing without the experience that usually is required, they're doing a fantastic job. They're, they're taking care of the kids on so many different levels. Bellows Falls Middle School had grade level meetings for all the teachers on Tuesday, means, you know, all the different grade levels, they had an opportunity to meet via over media device. So they're doing a great job communicating. Overall, Mr. D is very pleased on how things are going. They're very optimistic as we're moving forward, and that's great to hear. Everyone is definitely grateful for having last week off. I think teachers, administrators, and students alike, considering, you know, everything that's been going on. Overall, the buy-in for teachers and students have been fantastic, is what administrators are sharing with me. As far as some of the other things, right now, we're, we're continuing to try to match, work on some things for next year as much as we can in regards to matching, because we have a two-year teacher mentor program. So we want to, we're trying to match up teachers this year with their mentors for next year and provide them some under-the-year training. All ELA and reading programs for the SU was paid through grant money. In regards to the grants, we've also made, Dr. Carey's made some amendments. Those amendments, one of the amendments was to cover another additional 100 computers for students. So we cannot only get, make sure that we are truly a one-to-one supervisor union, but also to plan in case some computers go down or they are lost. We want to make sure that we have a backup for that. So we are using some grant monies through amendments to pay for an additional 100 computers. Also, we added to, through CFG money, we're looking at additional hotspots and broadband Wi-Fi bundles, kind of like we talked about earlier, because we are having a, quite a few individuals that have really spotty Wi-Fi. And so that even makes it difficult when they have hotspots. Mr. Bradley at the high school has been monitoring online health classes as well as he's been working with students with their senior projects via online. So there's a lot of interacting going there. On a regular base basis, there's about 32 students at the high school that the faculty and staff continue to reach out to make sure that they continue to be engaged and get them engaged in education. Another plus is that the state is actually using the guidance model that the Special Ed Office put out for 504s and IEPs. So I want to give kudos to them that they did such a fantastic job creating that and distributing, you know, how we will be meeting the needs of those students that the state, as well as other SUs, are using the model that they created. Pre-K has started their morning circles, and they're taking place every day now. So we're excited to hear that, because we haven't had a lot of guidance from the state in regards to how pre-K fits into the continuity of learning. But they're starting to, they're going to be very shortly giving us some more guidance in regards to that. And the main thing there is really looking at, not necessarily the 10 hours of time, but making sure that we're really keeping on top of the social and emotional well-being of the pre-K kids. We want to do it for all the kids, but that's what they're focusing on for the pre-K. It might be as they come in. At the end of the week, on Thursday, the final packet pickup will be in place for pre-K students. So they have their package to work on with their home for those of them who don't have Wi-Fi access, but also ones who do, because at the early pre-K levels and kindergarten levels, we really want that hands-on learning to take place that computers really can't compensate for. Pre-K is also working on next year's kindergarten registration. And the last day of school this year is going to be June 17th. Because we did have, at the end, very end of the winter season, we were going, we got pretty good shape. We only had two snow days, and we got hammered with another two at the end. So we didn't use all five, we did use the four. So we did calculate, five days into the calendar, we used four. So instead of getting out on the 18th, students will get out on the 17th. I'm going to give you, I will hold off on that piece for later. And so another thing is that we had some board questions that I wanted to answer was, in what efforts are underway to correct accounting of finances in last year's and this year? So we're not dealing with the same issues doing budgets for next year. So that was a question I, you know, I wanted to make sure that I could give you guys some information on and give you an update in regards to where we've been since we started this whole e-finance debacle and the struggles that we have in the business office. So at this point, through e-finance, the payroll issues have been, have been resolved. People are getting paid, they're getting paid on time. We are now using electronic timesheets, and we'll continue to expand on this for next year. Keep in mind, the timesheets and the calculation process that has been used in the SU for the past 20-plus years, it took an enormous amount of time to process. And so with the new process we have in place now, that will expedite the time with timesheets and cut back on the time we're spending recalculating and even collecting them. Because we found that at the very beginning of this process is that timesheets are being lost because they were switching hands so many times. Looking to, we're still looking into the electronic banking and signatures for e-finance. I'm in the process, if any of you saw your emails, gathering signatures for anyone who signs payroll and checks. And so we, once we have those, we can get them into the system. So all you need, make sure you use black pen, you're in a well-lit area, and you take a picture of it, and you send it off to me, and I'll crop it, and I'll get it to where it needs to be, so we can stop moving in the 21st century direction. So also in regards to the question of, you know, what have we been doing to make sure we're not going to be in the same situation as last year? I have been interviewing for business managers for next year, and we've had some really highly qualified, very experienced candidates. And so we'll be, hopefully I'll be filling that position for a July 1 start date within the next few days. Stay posted on that. And that, you know, so, you know, getting someone in who has an enormous amount of experience that on managing level and business and financing, I mean, that's really going to assist us in moving forward, because we did a lot of work this year with HRH, HRH Smith to update procedures and improve efficiencies in the business office. And we've made really good progress. And now it's just a matter of, we're going to start putting that in place. And I think having fresh blood in there with someone who has fresh blood and a lot of experience, we're, we're really going to make progress. So everyone's going to be able to focus on the jobs they, they have without being spread too thin and doing many different things. Because we already have plans in place to do a lot of cross-training. We've already started the cross-training, because that was one of the big problems we found is that when Edie left, is that it wasn't a whole lot of cross-training. So people were learning on the fly on top of a system that was still trying to learn. So we've already started the cross-training in regards to payroll and accounts payable. And so that's some of the progress that we've made. Audits. We won't be dealing with a lot of the same issues that we did for 2019 in regards to not getting a lot of the monthly reports. Because talking to the auditors, we got the, we're in the process of wrapping up to 2019 expenditures and everything. And that's what's taken the most time was the 2019, because that's really when a lot of the stuff, we're transferring from the old system to the new system. And so what the auditors are saying is, once we pass 2019, is that 2020 audit and future audits, you know, they're going to go back to being much smoother and faster like they were in the past. And that, so knowing that, it tells me that our e-finance system and our record-keeping is, is pretty much on par. If, as long as you have the 2020 audit as we wrap up the 19 and go right into the 2020 audit, that we'll not be encountering the lack of financial reports like we have this year. So that's pretty much an update on all the various areas of the business office. I think we're in a much better place now than we were, you know, a month from now with e-finance and getting new people in the position and the cross-training. There's still work that we need to get done. You know, I'm filling in as a business manager and trying to, you know, manage from afar, but I'm also, you know, not a business management, you know, it's not my background. So I'm really trying to just to manage the office to keep us going and getting the audits done. So I got more information on the, on the audits shortly. We covered the busing place. Okay, so as far as current finance and assessment reports and expenditures, I can give you some information. So as of April 31st, okay, Bellows Falls Union High School has spent about 70%, 76% of their expenditure budget. Rockingham has spent about 70% of their expenditure budget. Union Elementary has only spent 60, has spent 61%. And the Supervisor Union has spent 71% of their expenditure budget. This indicates that spending seems to be right on point for the three months that are left for the fiscal year. As of February 2019, you know, I know it's going a few months back, but WNSU had about $800,000 in cash in the bank. Union Elementary had over $2 million. Rockingham had about $1 million, and Bellows Falls Union High School had about $600,000. So the financial information that, you know, you just heard, I got that from HRH Smith, our auditing firm. Not verify, in, in, this is that verifies that to date, tax money is coming in, state money is being deposited, and assessments are being made. The cash is flowing and covering expenditures from what the auditors can tell at this point. And like I said, within the next few weeks, 2019 audit will be all done, and I'll be getting that out to everyone as soon as that becomes available. I'm just as anxious to see it as the rest of you. So I'd like to say that's not, that's it, but I, what I want to do right now is get into some of the, we have, superintendents have weekly meetings with Secretary French. So I want to go over some of the topics that we've been covering there. Everything from the CARES Act money to what we're looking at for deficit spending at the state level. So the governor stated a few weeks ago that the COVID seems to have reached the plateau, and it should be on a plateau for the next 10 days. And if you've been following it, you can see that the curve is flattening out a little bit. So, you know, that's promising. They're going to keep, continue to eye on that. All we can do for that is just listen to what the experts are telling us and continue to, to do what they're, they're telling us. As far as this, we gave, we were told that, you know, we want to continue to use the school calendar that was implemented and established at the beginning of the year. And so that's why we kept the April break intact. As you know, we continue to feed the students and the families over April break. Reimbursement for the COVID under the CARES Act, which is the, for those of you who don't know, the CARE Act is the federal stimulus package. And the amount that's going to be determined from, to this point, what I can tell is that they're going to base it on like 80% of your Title I money is the possible amount that they're going to be awarding. Off the top of my head, I can't recall what the, what our Title I money total amount is. In addition to that, the AOE was working to, like I said earlier, to provide us some pre-K guidance on continuity of education, because to this point, we really haven't had too much. And let's see. At the end, in May, the Secretary of Education needs to give the government a recommendation on closure or opening moving forward for the remainder of the school year. I know at one point, they said it's definite, but it seems now they're, they still want to revisit that because they are sensitive to all the graduations and all the events that happen at the end of the year. Spring sports is another thing they're going to have to make a decision on. So a lot of still decisions that have to be made. But based on what we can see right now, I can only speak for myself, and I don't personally think that, you know, schools will be back open or graduations and, you know, unfortunately, all these stuff that comes around with the end of the year is going to, is going to take place. Just jumped on a little bit. So as far as statewide, where we look at for dollars and deficits, is that $72 million of higher statewide for education spending, and we have 20, 25 million increase in healthcare spending. As of now, today's official projections are, there's about 39.5 million shortfall. And when you add that with some of the above numbers, you're looking at 73.9 total deficit. And it's projected, and the projected surplus that, that was available, the 12.9 million, that has evaporated. That is no longer, that's been used. So so when you put all that together, 12 and the 39, the, there's a deficit right now of about 90 million since last week when we spoke to the Secretary of Education. And from what I can read, that's already increased, I believe, around 100 million, if not more. So there is deficits there. Worst case is that the 39.5 million in relief will not show up until, you know, 2021 of next year. So what's that mean? Revenues have dropped, like I said, around 90 million so far. That's just since we've, the last month and a half, or however long we've been in this, this type of closure. The revised estimates in revenues generated by the sales and rooms and meal taxes, that usually generate 88.7 million. Well, let me say that, meals taxes will generate, it's 88.7 million less than previously projected for the education fund. So those monies that we usually get from taxes on sales, meals, and rooms, that 88.17 is going to be less than we have in the past. So all that money is down. So, but as we all know, the towns are still required to send and remit the state, the state for education tax money. So a lot going on. I just threw a lot of numbers at you and stuff, but it's constantly changing. And with the stimulus monies, it's about the actual amounts for those.
31.9.
Yeah, the, the state gets, they keep changing, so I want to make sure I get the accurate number. Just give me one second here. Sorry, just have so many notes, and I want to make sure I'm giving you guys all the information you need. So let me, while I look for that, let me touch base on this. So right now, districts without approved budgets, you know, the Senate, maybe the House has been looking at different possibilities in regards for those budgets. And what some of the possibilities they're looking at is adopting, is giving the local boards the authority to adopt last year's budget with a 4% inflator. Unless your budget that you propose, were going to propose to the public was less than that, then you proposed the budget as the board had drafted it. So we haven't had any, but that, so what that means is that if this bill is passed, either it's going to be passed and give the board the authority to adopt last year's budget until they can vote on a budget, or adopt the last budget with a 4% inflator on top of that. We don't know which direction that's going in, so we have to wait and see. I think that's about it. I just want to, so elementary and secondary school emerging release funds that we were talking about earlier is, the CARE Act is about 13 billion for Vermont. And, I mean, 13 billion nationwide, and around 31 million that Vermont will be getting. And and out of that 31 million, keep in mind, even though it's for, it's Vermont, it's not just public education, it's for independent schools, it's for colleges, it's for everything. And then based on that 31 million, like I said before, our share would be about 80% of our Title I monies. And then we have until September 30th of 2021 to actually spend that money. The state, however, does have the authority to retain 10% of the CARES money for the following fall. And there's an additional grant that the federal is going to pass down to the governor. Federal-wise, it's 3 billion. But Vermont will get about 4.4 million. And that money there, those funds there, that goes directly to the governor for education, and it's used at his discretion. So he can use it as he feels fit in regards to, I mean, maybe the deficits and spending and everything like that. So that's my report, and I'm willing to take any that anyone might have.
Jason Terry, and then Jack, please.
We have a certain time limit.
Nope.
All right, so I just want to fire some questions at you. Do you happen to know what the attendance, you went over attendance. Do you happen to know what the stats are as far as people missing school with the distance learning? Is it good, bad?
Right now, it's with my principals meeting this afternoon, it's not bad, and it's not good. I think it's right in the middle. We need to have, we have to keep an eye on this because we have to have at least 50%. So that's why we're keeping a close eye on it.
Are we meeting that goal?
What's that?
Are we meeting that 50%?
Right now, we are, yeah. I think we're just, we're a little above 50%.
Next question. I, I think you were quizzing me to make sure I was paying attention. You said April 31st. There's, there's only 30 days in April.
April 30th. March, I'm sorry. March 31st was that. My crystal ball doesn't do that, that yet, so. Plus, Jason.
All right, just, I want to make sure I was paying attention. Can you give the numbers again for Rockingham and what, what they actually spent? I got Rockingham at 70, Elementary at 61, for the other two high schools. How much did they spend on their budget?
Okay, let's see. Let me just scroll down here. All right, so the high school has spent 76% of their expenditures.
Yep.
Rockingham, 74%.
Yep.
Union Elementary is at 61%. And the SU is at 71%.
It's not what you said before.
Yes, it is. 76, 74, 61, 71 percent.
Yeah, you said 70 before, but that's okay. That was close.
So, so, so that means that they didn't spend all the money that they're supposed to. And is that because the school's closed? I just want to, I just want to know.
It means up from now until March 31st, that's how much of their, the money they've, they've spent so far. The percentage of their budget that they've spent so far. And we still have another three months to go, so.
And then, just two more questions. You said the governor, or we give 31 million to all schools and we have to use it by next year. What happens if we don't use that money?
They didn't say, I, I can't say, I mean, they didn't say, but I would think like any other funds that come down from the state, if it's not used, they take it back.
Okay. So, and then, thank you for that. And then you said something about a bill being passed by the, possibly. Would, does, does that, how I'm understanding it is, we go, we revert back to the previous year's budget? Or something of that nature?
Well, it's for the 19 SUs and districts that either voted on a budget and was voted down, or did not vote on a budget at all. So it's really to, to those entities that do not have a approved budget yet. So, so not all budgets, just the ones that haven't been approved yet.
Oh, so not ours, because our town voted yes on everything?
Correct.
Okay, that's a bummer. All right. That's the only questions I had. Thank you.
Yeah, no, Jason, that's a good question, because talking to superintendents, I think it's, it's a double-edged sword, because you have, you know, the people who have approved budgets are wishing they didn't, and some of the people who don't have approved budgets wish they did.
Well, it would make a lot less work, because now we have to backtrack and try to save these hard-working Vermonters the several dollars that they already approved as yes. And then we have, you know, my personal take is administrators are like, hey, we, we have the money, but we really don't have the money until you actually have the money in hand. So that, that's how I roll at my house, you know? I don't buy groceries without the money.
For the, for the, for Windham Northeast, the ones who do have budgets, just because we have the money does not necessarily mean we need to spend it all.
Yeah, that, that's going to be key.
And I'm working, you know, I'm working, and so are the administrators, is finding that the budgets of that are approved. You know, and that's pretty much, you know, what we've been talking about. These budgets are approved, but that does not mean we have to spend all the money. And we should, we, we're going to do our best to find ways to look at the budgets to reduce the spending. So, thank you.
Every, every, every light switch that's on that doesn't need to be on needs to be turned off, you know? Those types of things, just, just like your house, you know?
Yeah.
You know, today I was giving my family grief because they turned the thermostat higher than it should be. And, you know, normally they're at school, so the thermostat's off. But, you know, you get, you have to manage every penny, every dollar. So it's a hard job we have at Hallowell's.
Yeah. Thank you for your questions, Jason.
Chris, you had, I believe, a question about e-finance from Jack. Is that correct, Jack?
Yes, and I just wanted to note that Priscilla and Justin had their hands up at various points.
My question was whether or not the multiple e-finance issues have been resolved to your satisfaction, Chris? And if not, what is the status and what are we doing about it?
I think they've been resolved. Have they, are they resolved to my satisfaction? I don't think e-finance is going to be resolved to my satisfaction until we're operating at 100% efficiency. And we're getting closer, but we're not there yet.
The, the follow-on to that was whether or not all this embroilio with e-finance and with the Finance Office has generated any deficits past plan. Has generated uh, any deficits past plan, I'm assuming some, but I'm wondering if we have a, if we're able to quantify it at this point.
Um, deficits in regards to.
The, what the cost of the finance office that was projected versus what it's running at this point.
No, like I said, right now, all we know is we've um, the SU has spent seventy percent of their expenditure budget. Um, so, you know, um, we'll get more answers once the audit comes in within the next couple of weeks.
Jess, then, um, Priscilla, go ahead, please, Jess.
Um, just the issues being resolved with e-finance, there is still no reporting function built into it, is that correct?
Um, I don't believe so. I couldn't tell you one hundred percent, but um, you know, that's, you know, the until, like I said, until we have it running smooth and seamlessly. We know what the system can do and what it can't do, I'm not going to be satisfied with it. So um, I think the, the, I think there's a reporting system, but it's very limited. And so it's been, we spend a lot of time just in the reports that the office has been giving to me. They're spending a lot of time manipulating the reports just so I can read them. So if they have reporting systems, but they're not very um. User friendly for any of us who are not business minded people and used to looking at numbers on a spreadsheet. There's a lot of manipulation that has to be done in regards to putting it in a format that um, we can make sense out of. So I agree with that.
Follow up question.
Well, I, going over. The last report we got, which might have been year to date, um, I had asked because there was categories that showed. Like tens of thousands of dollars difference that wasn't expected, but it looks like it had. I think it might have been the um, general ledger codes that the feds changed. Because there was plenty of other categories that had like zero spending, zero budget, zero spending. And I think is that, is next fiscal year? That weirdness that we had this year where categories had been changed, that should be gone, correct?
Yeah, because, because they will, they will all be changed. I think what the, the report that Athens Grafton Westminster got, that was an example of. Um, the business office trying to get a report that was legible and they lost information in the process of it. So that's, you know, that's exactly what you're talking about is that they're trying to manipulate, not manipulate, but put it in a format that we can read.
Right.
And that was a byproduct of that is that they forgot the, um, I think it was some of the revenues that were supposed to be on there.
Oh, no, even after the revenue was corrected, it's just trying to read the report, you can see where there's categories. Where there was no budget, but there was seventy thousand dollars spent. But then there's a very similar looking category that had a lot of budget and very little spent. And I don't know if that was the code changes.
I, you know, I would have to check, but I know that, I, I know that the reports that I, that I've been trying to get from them, they sent me a couple. I had the auditors work on and give me some uh, expenditure reports. But they're much easier to read, but it took them time to get it to where they were.
Right.
So I'm hoping that um, in the meantime, we're going to keep working on and getting the reports to a place where. We can just drop them into from e-finance without a lot of change, because that's very time consuming. Because what happens is exactly what your boards are, is you lost information unintentionally because we're trying to get it in the right format, so.
Yeah, Jack has his hand up too.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, uh, I can answer Justice's question to some extent. We had the same issue. Uh, when we were preparing the budget and it really is because the categories don't pour over cleanly. I ended up building a whole spreadsheet at the house to do this. That's how we actually did our budget this year. And yeah, that, that problem is still out there and once you're, once the system's been running for a second year. You'll have an apples to apples comparison, but it's a, it's, it's a bit of a mess and it's, it really takes. Uh, takes a lot of manual labor to try to read it.
Okay, thank you.
Priscilla, are you ready?
I, I think so. Thank you. Uh, yeah, Ja, I'm glad Jack um, interjected on that. Yes, our budgets, when we were trying to form our budgets, there was just. It was really very difficult to be able to know what to, what figures to go by to prepare a correct budget. And that was part of my questions with, with doing this. An audit does not explain, um. It, it only does to see if the accounting is correct and increases credibility if you can say the accounting was put in correctly. But we still, as a board, are not getting anything to show what the revenues are coming in and the expenditures. Giving us a figure of a percentage, which I appreciate Mr. Pratt doing that. But it does not show us where we actually stand line by, line by line, and I think we need more information as a board. If we're going to look at um, what needs to be saved, what needs to um, to happen here and be making decisions on, on anything for the future. Because right now we're kind of flying blind and, and just giving us a percentage doesn't, doesn't tell us where we're going. Doesn't tell us how the business office is correcting. I'm listening to Jack's comments and I'm listening to Justice's comments. And thinking that maybe the business office still cannot do anything. It's not ready to do this is what I got out of their con- conversations. So that's worrying. When can we expect that the business office can give us this?
Well, I rephrase, I rephrase, I rephrase what we've been saying all along. You're right on all those cases in regards to, I can only give you what I have. I'm just as, I'm just as frustrated with the whole process as the board is, as I can't give you the information until the audit's complete. All I'm able to goo- do is, is try to tease out from what the budget is giving me right now, and right now have the percentages, that's all I can give you. But until the, until the audit is complete. I can't disagree with what you're saying. What I can disagree is in regards to um, saying that the business office isn't any better off now than it was before. I don't think that, I think that's unfair to um, put that on the business office because, you know, we don't, you know. I know that we've made a lot of progress and right now. We have to wait and see what the audits say. I can't produce them out of thin air. I know you guys need that information, but until I have that information. I can't, I can't pull it out of the air.
Yes, and I'm not saying the business offices isn't the same point, Mr. Pratt. What I'm saying is that on this particular area, they are not any better off. Because if we cannot get expenditures and we cannot get revenue and we cannot look at it month by month like it used to be done a couple of years ago. Then as a board, we can't make decisions as to budgets or, or any of that, that part. And that's where it's really putting pressure on us, and I know it's putting pressure on you too. I realize.
And I understand what you're saying, but you cannot, the, the business office can't give you what, you know. The audit has to be done, the reconciliations have to be done for two thousand nineteen, if they're not done.
Something to do with expenditures and revenue.
Okay, alright, I'm not going to argue with you, but an audit is going to give you accurate information in regards to. You know, how our spending is doing because all of the conflicts with the new codes, code of accounts and go on everything, they're conflicting. We have to make sure that they're accurate. That's been part of the problem. Until we're there. It's like, you, you're acting like we're holding on in for, for information that we should be providing to the board. Every single one of these board members, I don't think are going to disagree that we've been trying to give you the information that we need. And then when we've, in, in the past, it's been given to you, it's been inaccurate. I'm not going to give you inaccurate information. I'm going to wait till the information is solid and it's reliable, even if it's in bits and pieces.
Chris, I'm going to interject here and make a distinction, and that is that Priscilla's uh, questions here, I think, are specifically around the. Uh, fiscal year nineteen twenty budget, which is our current fiscal year. And the audit will uh, give us numbers for the previous fiscal year, which is uh, fiscal year eighteen nineteen. And your point about needing um, a consistent benchmark so that you can make comparisons is absolutely correct. However, I think that Priscilla does have a point, which is that we've essentially been flying blind in our um, fiscal year nineteen twenty budget for quite some time. And, and there is frustration in a number of quarters of this board, not just with Priscilla, and I think it's probably across all of the boards.
Right.
Mr. Terry just goes, hand up there. Thank you. Um, so just, just to interject, um, I uh, I don't care about what happened years ago because I already spent that money. Um, I care about the dollars I'm going to spend tomorrow. So, Mr. Pratt, uh, are we allowed, so any information you can give? Me, uh, I think there's probably a way we can backdoor into what we're spending, but we're going to have to do the legwork ourselves. Are we, are we allowed to see those numbers and kind of do the legwork and? You, there, there is a way, I, I mean, it's hard to explain, but you, you can do it and to Priscilla's point, yeah, it would be great if you could see the. Comparables like a checkbook and then cut or whatever, but um, you know, I'm happy to see anything to uh, uh, help with the future, future costs and get them down.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll send out the expenditures that I have tomorrow morning to all board members.
Okay, Jess, I'm not sure if I saw your hand up or not, but I do want to just check in with some other uh, members that we haven't heard from uh, so far. And um, Cheryl, any questions?
Well, I think that uh, the last comment you just made, um, David Clark was helpful to me. I, I don't understand if we are making improvements. In the, the e-finance and the business office work, uh, the distinction you just made between closing out eighteen nineteen with an audit. Is very different from what the numbers are to date and, and I, Chris, I would think that, that we're doing better in that area. I mean, I understand the unified, the, the um, budget report you gave us recently was missing the encumbrance column. That was what you were talking about, so that we literally could not figure out whether the numbers were accurate. But, but that's giving us everything spent to date, so, so I'm not sure what, Priscilla, all the questions are that you have right now. We have, I think we have current information with detail of everything spent through March thirty one.
Chris, do you want to respond to uh, Cheryl's question or uh, shall I move on and ask Lynn if she has a question?
Um, I mean, I think I'm just gonna, you know, I'll wait till I'll send out the expenditures that I have for the board members tomorrow and you guys can take a look at it.
Lynn. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Lynn Morgan, any questions?
No, still trying to understand it.
Uh, Brenda, um, if, if you are, are miked, do you have any questions at this point? Brenda, I think you may be still muted.
Okay, so I don't have any questions. Sorry about that.
Okay, uh, George, questions?
None at this time, thank you.
Jessa, did you have a, a question before?
It was kind of a response to Cheryl where she said we have all the information. We do, but it's incredibly hard to decipher. I'm looking at, you know, we had an expenditure for. You know, it's one zero one, one one two zero, one one one, et cetera, et cetera. That was thirty two thousand dollars more than expected, but then right above it, we have a slightly different one that has had zero expenditure. And it's just these, the. I don't know if we can, there's not a good way for us to reconcile the title that's given to these expenses. As to what they really are, principal's office, administrator's office. There's just, I don't know if there is a way, maybe Jack has figured it out, um. To actually organize these individual codes. Because there's, there's just so many things and people who don't go over our budgets. I mean, I go over our budgets and our expenditures and warrants all the time. So anybody who's looking at these reports from the public really isn't going to be able to make any sense of it.
Give a response, Chris?
Oh, she's absolutely right. I mean, like I said, if I continue to, I mean, I'm going to give you the information, but it might not be in the um. User friendly kind of way to decipher it and you, it's probably gonna, it's prob, you're probably gonna have more questions than not, than you had if you didn't have them, so. But I'll send them out tomorrow morning.
Thank you, Chris. Deb Wright, do you have any questions?
No, I don't think so, only because. We're, we're, we're at this point where it's been what, three months or more since we've seen an act, um, a budget, um, budget, budget, year to date material. It's gotten quite a ways out and. And, and I don't know exactly what, at what point we will be back on track so that we can see numbers that we can operate with. Um, as the bud, as oversight, basically our job is oversight. And able to see these numbers and how they're progressing based upon the budget lines that we set. Um, each year. I, I'm, I don't, I don't want to get any more frustrated with this budget. I'm having enough trouble with the municipality right now, so, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Deb. Uh, Chris, I think we can uh, move on.
So, let's get her hand up, sorry.
Go ahead, Priscilla.
If Jack can do this over the weekend and do a spreadsheet, is there any way that our business office can do something like that? So that we have something, so that we can see the comparison, so we can see where we're at? I mean, we, and I, I'm sorry that I go back to a couple of years ago. I know you got them regularly on a regular basis. And I know this, this new system has been a real problem, I understand. But at this point, we're getting towards the end of this year and it would be nice to know what expenditures and what revenue looks like. And that, that we can figure out rather than this, this complicated system that, like you're saying, we're not going to be able to figure out.
Priscilla, it took me the better part of a week to do the mapping just for our little tiny budget on a one time shot basis. And only after dealing with multiple. Garbage that we were getting from the, from the office, to have a dynamic system requires a couple of things, not to belabor the point, but. The categories that Chris is working with are entirely different in some cases. They're much cruder in some cases, there is no clean mapping. I don't know who spec this thing, it was one of the reasons I objected to it. In the first place is there was no basis for Edie or for the staff there or for Chris or for God Almighty. To be able to dynamically map expenditures on a granular basis. I'm really going to be entertained by uh, the, the audit folks because one of the reasons this is taking them so long is because. They, who are professionals who do this every day are having a hard time. I don't think it's reasonable to ask an understaffed. Uh, department to do this in a dynamic form. I'm really sorry, I wish we could do it, but I think this is just not a thing that. Can be reasonably done and I'm not fronting for, for Chris, I couldn't do it if I were there. I don't know how anybody could. Sorry.
You all should have the expenditures in your bo- mailbox now, so you can take a look at them.
Chris, are we ready uh, to move on?
Yep.
Uh, there is no committee work I'm aware of. Are you aware of any?
No.
New business for discussion, action, allowable revenue streams for special education, paraprofessional salaries.
Um, yeah, I'm gonna, um, I have a director, Andy Haas, I think he's still with us.
Yeah, I'm here, Chris.
Um, do you want, so Andy, would you mind um, bringing the board up to speed in regards to, to that?
Yeah, definitely. Um, so there's a couple of things, um. The, so allowable's um. Revenue streams for anything is exactly what can be, um. Uh, I'll read you a quote here I have. So it, it's basically any, any services defined in an IEP. Um, that's direct services, paratime, case management, materials to support goals and objectives, transportation. Administrative costs to comply with IEP, stick candidates. Um, professional development for, um, you know, any initiatives from the state, from the federal government. Um, so essentially anything that's in an IEP. That a person is doing direct services for that or indirect services can be um, put up there for reimbursement. Um, and as part of that expenditure. Um, things that are not are the things that when a paraprofessional especially is um, providing recess or lunch. Or they're doing coverage uh, of a classroom, um, when the regular ed teacher isn't there, all of that is a general ed fund. Um, and so um, we have to parse those things out. Um, so a lot of times when we offer a contract to a para. We might offer a contract at six and a half hours. To do um, paraprofessional work and then the principal might hire them for another half an hour to do. Um, duty coverage or something like that, and, and so that's how we do it. But then we do twice a year, uh. But then we do twice a year, um, sorry, I went right on my head. We do time studies twice a year. And during those time studies, um, everyone records what they're doing in, in work. And then we, Stacy, um, really has it down to where she, she goes through them and parses out what is regular ed work and what is special ed work. And then what's happened in the past is then that has been averaged out and then there's a bill back to regular education for those different expenditures. So what, one of the things we're finding, especially now, even under this COVID piece, is that the paraprofessionals are doing a lot of regular ed work, um, as opposed to special education work. And so we're working out a system of how to um, be able to identify what, what's regular ed and what's special ed on a daily basis. That all said, one of my biggest concerns was how the state was going to respond um, in this, um, the virtual world that we're in now and how they were going to deal with the revenue streams and, and the, um, the payback. And so when I spoke with the state about it um, earlier this week, um, and I'd sent them the question ahead of time so that they could have time to go and research it and get me an answer of how they were going to do it, the answer I got back is that um, they still don't have any guidance on that yet. Um, then later, later that day, an email started getting passed around from, and I want to make sure I got the right person, um, from, um, from Brad James at the AOE, that was asked by another finance manager, um, about how reimbursement was going to happen. And he, and I'm going to quote him here. He said, um, "I was more or less unaware that time studies you use for state special ed reimbursement are based on two time studies a year in, in the fall and then in January, February. Of course, you can always do more, but, um, but nobody really does." He says, "Those time studies are the basis for both the licensed staff and paraprofessional staff unless the para has significant change in duties. Then you need to do another weekly time study." He says, "I think the state time studies were the same as those required by the federal time studies and the ten tended to form and precipitate my response when asked if you were going to be fully reimbursed or not. Our general inclination here at the AOE is to fully reimburse sped costs based on those two weekly time studies since they are what you normally, how you are normally reimbursed." So from that indication, um, our reimbursement should um, follow um, based on what we were, based on the time studies we did in the fall and then the time studies we did at the end of January and early February. And so that the COVID period of time will not be reflected in our time studies and reimbursement from the state.
All right, the chair recognizes Priscilla Lambert.
I was just thinking, good. That's what they should do. And thank you, Andy.
No, I, I honestly, I was very worried when, um, when the, in the, earlier in the day, when the answer I got back was, oh, we're still waiting on guidance from that. And I'm thinking, you know, we're, we're five weeks into this baby and um, I got worried. And then when that email started getting passed around, um, I was very hopeful.
Are there other questions for Andy before we move on?
Uh, you're on mute. Uh, David, you can't be on mute, you're speaking.
I'm, I'm unmuted, I'm recognizing you, Jack.
All right, I'm just going to say that Brad's consistent because we asked him that question about three weeks ago and he gave the same answer then, which was that they were going to rely on the, on the time studies that they had because nobody was going to try to map out all the changes in duties, uh, because we were worried that we were all, that all the, all the schools, uh, district chairs were worried that we were going to see massive deficits from the change in tasks and the inability to map them to IEPs.
Anyone else?
David, can I just, um, and, and this is just a, a comment back on that. I think this will be no surprise, but I think what's been the biggest frustration is you, like, we get conflicting information constantly, um, from the AOE. And sometimes in the same day, um, two different directives or guidance pieces will come out and they'll almost be in direct conflict of each other. And um, one of the other ones we had to work out was the Medicaid reimbursement because um, the state, the AO, one part of the AOE was saying, um, "Go ahead and um, you can use what's called a distant learning plan," which is kind of like a coverage for the IEP so we don't have to do amendments during this time. And then another office within the same department was saying, "No, you can't do that. You have to do complete amendments to the IEP and hold, hold meetings." On the same day, those two memos came out and it took them over a week to somehow, you know, kind of work that out so that we can do this effectively, um, with the DLPs and not have to do the, the five Bs, which is the, um, the amendments to the IP, so.
Within doubt, Brad James knows what he's talking about. That's the one thing I've warned you can take to the bank.
Okay, um, Andy, Jason Terry has a question for you, I believe.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I don't want to sound like I'm really, really new, which I am. What is an IEP?
Nope, that's, Dave, David usually corrects me when I, when I'm, when we're in a meeting to, and reminds me that I should not speak in acronyms, so I apologize.
Well, there's, there's other, there's people from the public and, um, the public as of last week, so.
Yeah, no, no, but thank you. Um, because, because in, in special education, we tend to speak in, we have a lot of acronyms and we speak that way. An IEP is an individualized education plan.
Okay.
So any student who's been identified for um, needing um, special education and, and they're eligible for special education, we develop an, an individualized education plan which dictates the services that will be provided for that student.
Gotcha. And uh, just, are, are the paras going to get paid? Is that?
I, I believe so, yes. I mean, I haven't heard anything different, so.
All right. Thank you.
Priscilla?
Um, I have a question though. I, I know that we've just covered on teachers and basically paras and what they're continuing to do and what the plan is there. But what, and the business office, because business office is working on all of this financial stuff. But what about your office, Andy? What are the people in your office doing? Can you address that?
Sure. Uh, the people in uh, my office, um, both Michael and Stacy as coordinators are, have been working directly with principals and um, with staff on coordinating how we're rolling out services. And um, my administrative assistant has been um, working on, um, working with the other secretaries. We continue to run IEP meetings and work as LEAs in, in IEP meetings. We've been um, trying to support our staff the best we can in this situation and understand from the state, um, the different, um, as I said, like, there's a lot of different directives that come out, um, from one day to the next and um, trying to interpret them and, and provide the best guidance so that we stay compliant.
Um, if you could, Andy, unwind LEAs for us, please.
Oh, pardon me, yeah, thank you. Local uh, education administrator or agency.
Thank you.
That's the person who makes the final decision in an IEP meeting, so.
All right, I'm scanning and I may not have caught uh, someone's hand. Any other questions before we move on? All right, Chris, um, we have an item 7B, which is approve going out to bid for two small buses. And before we even jump into this, I would like to know if there is an administrative recommendation here, um, for the board to consider.
David, you're on mute again.
Let me unmute myself. Chris, we're up to 7B, uh, approve going out to bid for two small buses. And um, I would like to query the superintendent as to whether there is an administrative recommendation in this item before we even start to mix it up.
I would recommend that nothing goes out to bid at this point under the current circumstances.
I second that.
Unless there are any objections from board members, and you certainly have a sent from Jason Terry, I think we can uh, move on to old business for discussion and action. And I'm not aware we have any.
Priscilla's got her hand up.
Oh, Priscilla?
I, I just have a, I have a question. And, and Stan did say that, that way back in January that he would be asking for um, two small bids in, in April. So I wasn't really surprised to see that on there. But going back to how much has been in the, uh, budget and stuff this year, we had 166,000 in the budget on, in July, 38,000 was um, a previous, was in for a previous loan. So we needed 50,500 with a trade-in for the Bluebird and we approved the 50,000, 50,500 to be borrowed at, at that time. Then in August, there was 35,000 that we had approved for a used bus. And then in September, we had 19,000 that was approved for a new bus. Was, do we have any accounting for that money? And then we also, the second part of this question would be, we had talked about a bus that was being purchased and needing other 17,500 that we voted down. So I'm wondering how that figures into this. So I really would like to know about that.
Chris, can you respond to that? Or is this something we're going to need advice from Stan on?
No, I think everything that she said has been brought up in previous board meetings and the, the, the conversation right now was whether or not to put it out to bid. And I said, you know, and I disagree with it. I mean, you mean, the, the question is, is a little outrageous in regards to have we accounted for the funds? I'm, I'm not even going to entertain that with a, with an answer because we have to account for the funds and that if we want that information, go back to the previous board meetings to get it.
It hasn't been there. It hasn't been given. Um, that has been put out that that was the money that was available and we voted down giving money for that bus that was being purchased. I voted no, so I could bring that back up if I needed to, if that means that that bus needs the additional funds to be able to pay for that bus and not get it reclaimed. But I still need an answer to that and there has not been one answer given, Mr. Pratt, not one. I've asked the question several times and it has not been answered.
Okay, the chair is going to interpose himself in this um, interesting discussion. Priscilla, what I'm going to ask you to do is to, um, if you can reduce it to writing, and I realize that you have been diligent.
I've already done that twice.
I don't know her question. She, she's asked three different things. Give me, give me a question and I'll answer it.
Let me see, let me see if we can work toward a resolution that the entire board will be able to understand. Priscilla, I think you have done that. If you would please resend your correspondence to me, copy Chris Pratt. I will work with Chris and make sure that we can provide a written response um, to you. And then you can review it and tell us if it is satisfactory or not. Um, I, I have a great deal of sympathy for both you in terms of the fact that you've been diligent about asking the questions and also for Chris because I think that he has been diligent in trying to pursue the answers. Um, I think we have a problem with um, a business operation that cannot generate relevant reports timely. And I don't think it's the business office that's the problem, but rather the software we've been forced to work with. So, you know, once again, let's get you an answer that um, you consider to be accurate and then we will trot it out to the rest of the board. And we could be working on that. Today's Wednesday. Uh, if you can get that out this week, we can certainly try and have an answer by this time next week for you, Priscilla.
David, my concern is that this is the board meeting. And if we did need funds for that other bus that we've already purchased and we did need them, I did want to have the opportunity to bring it back up. I didn't want to leave it out there as Jack said, well, maybe they just reclaim the bus and take it away. I didn't want that happening if we needed the bus sitting there. And so I felt like by, you know, looking at what was in the budget, what had been used to know whether we did need that. And I do appreciate Mr. Pratt. I appreciate him saying that, you know, we need to wait on bidding for some buses to see where we're at. I do appreciate him very much. But I do want to be sure that I haven't been negligent and not, and because I voted against the expenditure of the 17,500, I wanted to be sure that I hadn't been negligent on bringing it up again in case we did need to approve anything.
Informally, Priscilla, I have raised the same question with the office and I have received verbal assurances that we do not have a problem currently with the financing on that bus. That's not the same as an answer. It's just that uh, the repo man isn't looking for it right now.
Okay. All right, that's what I needed to know. Thank you very much, David. That, that kind of solved my problem.
Okay, um, is there any other old business, Chris, that we need to deal with?
Um, I don't have anything.
Okay, appointments, retirements. Well, I saved a, a good one here. I am going to step aside from negotiations. I certainly have been involved very recently, um, with regard to um, the question of whether we were going to reopen early retirements. Appears we're not. Uh, but as I said, I am going to step away from my responsibility for directly negotiating on behalf of the supervisory union. And I am going to appoint Steve Fine in my stead.
A question for the chair.
Mr. Brier?
Uh, just out of curiosity, and I have no idea how this works, but uh, do we have the ability to appoint uh, representatives of this board who are not actually members of this board? Mr. Fine is a fine person. I like him a great deal, but he is not a member or hasn't been an active member of the SU board in some time and he would be filling in, in that capacity. Uh, is that uh, is that kosher here?
Well, I anticipated that you might raise that question, Jack. And in fact, I have a couple of answers for you. Um, I have perused the WNESU bylaws and on page three out of seven, Article Five, attendance and participation. All members of the boards of school directors of each of the constituent districts may attend any board meeting, including but not limited to attending all executive sessions. Um, and I have consistently maintained, and no one has disputed it, that all board members of the constituent boards are in fact, members of the supervisory union board, although there are only three voting uh, members assigned to vote at any given meeting. And with regards to the chair's duties, this is Article Four, duties of the board officers, um, to appoint appropriate ad hoc committees to serve the needs and interests of the board. Interestingly enough, there is no specific language about any particular standing committees of the boards in the WNESU bylaws.
Right.
Um, so you're on the, on the negotiating with the, for the contracts next year, right? Is this what you're talking about?
That is correct. And uh, Priscilla, we're hopeful that we will be able to negotiate a multi-year contract.
Okay. Um, and what is your reasoning for stepping aside? Because you've got the background in having been there for several, several of the meetings and I think you do a good job.
Well, I appreciate your kind remarks. There, there have also been criticisms, uh, in some quarters of my involvement in what I think may have been regarded as a private tier effort to see if we could negotiate a re-opener. And also, quite frankly, I think that um, my relationship with the WNEA at this point is perceived in some quarters as being a little cozier than would be appropriate under those circumstances.
Let me respond. I, I disagree. Let me respond. I disagree with you totally, and I am probably the one that was most vocal about your doing a side agreement. But I think as far as acting for us on the negotiating thing, you've got a lot of background in it. You've done it for a lot of years, and I think your expertise is very much needed.
Well, Priscilla, I'm flattered by that, and I'm going to respond to you. That is my hope that the negotiating committee members will liaise a lot more closely with their boards moving forward. This actually, I think, is one of the things we did very well when we had both Russ Capron and Steve Fine doing negotiations for us, and it's something that we've done less well in the more recent past. From my perspective, in the past, the boards advise the negotiating committee, and in the last several years, it's really been the negotiating committees who've gone back to the boards and say, this is what we're going to do. Jason Terry?
I do not know.
Anyone else?
I believe that the correct response to what the negotiation committee has done, David, is we've gone back to our boards with, this is the agreement that we reached. Do you agree? Not so much this is what we're going to do.
Fair enough, Rick. In the past, the negotiating committee members have queried their boards in the beginning as to what their positions were going into negotiations, and I think have been much more involved in terms of soliciting board input.
It should be a voting member of the board. David, one other thing, I think it should be a voting member of this board.
Well, Priscilla, I've been through the bylaws, as I said before, and I find no prohibition about having a non-voting member participate in an ad hoc committee.
Mr. Chair, this is Cheryl, Charles. I wondered if I could note for the record, I think Mr. Pratt earlier today saw that your indication to decide to resign, and strongly recommended that you not do so. I just wanted to put that out there also.
Well, I appreciate your pointing that out. And actually, that reminded me of another thing. The WNESU bylaw should now be up on the drive. I asked Sue Stack if she could do that for us today. So if there are members who would like to become more familiar with them, they should be available on the WNESU website now.
Priscilla has her hand up.
I move to overrule the chair and leave him on the negotiating committee.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
You don't need a second, do you? Small rules.
I would like to have a second, because we have never formally recognized Robert's Rules for Small Boards for this board.
I'll second it only for the purposes of discussion.
Thank you. We're open for discussion. Priscilla, do you want to speak to your motion?
Yes, I think you're such a valuable member that I am willing to put that motion out there, because I think otherwise. Stephen has not been in the negotiations for the last couple years, and you have, so you know what directions they've been going in. You know what, a lot more about what's being asked and what it could be. Also, I hate to bring this one up, but health-wise, I think, I think you're a robust and person ready to do the, do the job.
Chris?
You know, it's a, it's a board's decision either way, but I think technically by law, the, anyone who serves on the committee, they do not have to be a voting member of the SU Board. I just wanted to put that out there. Whatever you guys decide to do is fine, but I'm just saying, in regards to open meeting laws, you do not have to be a voting member of the board to be part of the negotiation.
Yeah, but I didn't say it's voted ahead of time.
David?
Additional discussion, since I am scanning quickly, not seeing hands. Forehead there.
Okay. I simply want to say that should a member be forced to stay upon a negotiating, or any committee for that matter, if they choose to change, and they have someone who was absolutely going to take their place, I think that becomes a voluntary issue. Any member of the board could step off of a committee, that's up to them. That's it. It's just, that's voluntary. Additional work of the board member. Thank you.
Additional question or comment before we get to a vote?
Yeah, this is Cheryl. I don't think a vote on this is appropriate either. I think it's, David, your decision to make. I think it was just important for us to say that we really value you, that I thought the superintendent had made that recommendation that you stay on as well. But I personally don't think a resolution to force you to stay on is appropriate.
With all due respect, we are under a motion here. Go ahead, Priscilla.
David?
The reason, did someone else want to speak first?
I did hear Rick Holloway, I think.
Yes, I was just wondering, have we, did we, what do the ground rules say about changing members? Because I'm sure there was some comment in there.
Mr. Chair?
I believe we have until the third meeting, and I, and I don't know if the first meeting didn't count, so technically, we're, I don't think we've even reached our three meetings yet before you can make additional additions to negotiations. I think that would be part of that. So I think you guys are okay at this point.
I thought there was something, I thought there was some specific language about members as well.
Let me see if I can find it on my drive.
Mr. Chair?
Not that I deny David wanting to leave, I'm seriously considering appointing a different member myself, so.
Mr. Chair, hello?
Mr. Brier, you're recognized.
Two points. One, I do fear that this is a decision made because of the, the chair of this board's extraordinary work, trying to find ways to help save money and work with the union in creative ways. You may feel that he hasn't been sufficiently supported. I hope that that's not the case, because I personally admire his going the extra mile. I do think, though, he has the right to appoint members, including community members, to committees. We've always, we've done that in the past, and I think he has an absolute right, under Robert's Rules, to appoint who he chooses to, to committees. They don't even necessarily have to be members of this board or any board. So if he wishes to do that, then I think we should respect his prerogative. I would hope that he changes mind, but he has the right to do what he wishes.
Well, we do have a motion on the floor. Are we ready for the motion?
No.
Yes, sir.
While I, actually, I don't recall seeing any email or anything, so I'm kind of surprised about this. And while I don't want to see, I don't know how I feel about changing negotiators at this point, but Priscilla, I don't want to see us in a position where we can force somebody to be on a committee against their will. I don't know if we can do that. And secondly, if we are forcing someone to do it, I don't want someone who doesn't want to be there negotiating on our behalf.
Anyone else before we get to the question?
I have an answer from the ground rules that were signed off by both parties, if you would like me to read it.
Please, Chris.
In regards to bargaining teams, prior to the first bargaining session, each party will provide the other a written statement authorizing and naming those empowered to bargain to a conclusion during these negotiations. Each party shall designate a bargaining team member to serve as a contact to facilitate communication between bargaining sessions. If either party changes any of these members, it will provide the other party with a written notice of the change prior to the next negotiations session.
Are we ready for the question?
David?
Jessa, and then Priscilla.
How many sessions are we in? That wasn't entirely clear from the response. Are we adding?
I'm checking right now.
I believe it's, we've had two.
The ground rules, one and an actual one, I believe, is what we did.
Yeah, that's correct. That's right.
And in terms of the three meetings rule, we've had one of the three, so that's where we stand.
Yep.
And what is?
My, my motion, basically, what, I'm sorry, was just not finished. I can wait.
I, well, no, I was just wondering, what is the written notice period to change members of the negotiation committee?
As long as they're notified before the prior meeting.
Yeah. There's no particular time period mentioned?
No, there's not.
Priscilla.
Okay, I was particularly concerned with continuity, because I do know that the, from past experience, that the WNEA gets very upset when they are changed. And I also think David is a great negotiator. I think, I don't think he really wants to get off there, and that was part of my, part of my reason for making the motion. I think he just was feeling a little stressed over what happened with the opening the incentives again, and I don't think, I think he was trying to do the very best for us in, in his capacity. And I really think that, I would like him to really rethink that. So I think making that, that motion that we would overrule him at this point is not a bad thing, because that gives him a little bit longer to think about it. And he can, you know, he's alerted us at this point, so then if he, you know, at this point, we've overruled him, but then if he changes and decides to go ahead with it, then yes, I, we can't force him. Can you speak to that, David?
Well, I have given it actually quite a bit of consideration, and not just recently, Priscilla. I really find that my overall responsibilities take an enormous amount of my time, particularly now that we're dealing with the distance learning situation. And my, my thinking was built on two things. One is that I'm not doing a number of the things I think I should be doing outside of school. And secondly, of all the members that we have in the district, I realize that Steve Fine has a history in the district, but he also knows labor law, and I would say that the only person I know from either side who is as well-versed in labor actually is you.
Okay, let me answer back. I would willingly withdraw the motion if, but I would like you to give it more thought before you actually do it and really think about this, because I think you're, you're the best one for the job.
Thank you, Priscilla. Anyone else before we move on? I think we are down to our executive session, and I would look for a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of, need the other, purpose of discussing personnel and an update on a legal matter. I have a motion, please.
So moved.
Has a motion. Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Priscilla, aye.
Deborah, aye.
Lynn, aye.
Cheryl, aye.
Oh, anyone opposed? All right, we're going to go in. Chris, we have quite a few visitors, so if you can get the voting and non-voting members in the executive session, that'd be great.